Okay, yeah, it's starting that now.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Personnel Committee meeting on this day, the 21st of June 2022 at two o'clock. I'd like to start with 15022 to receive any additional interest not already registered. Registered, it's too hard, isn't it? Registered. Anybody? None? Right, apologies for absence.
You're on the phone, councillor Brindon.
Thank you. And now we, 15222 is to confirm the minutes, the committee meeting held on the 10th of May 2022. It has been through full council on the 31st of May. And what I'm asking for is permission for it to be signed. Unless anybody's got any issues. Pass the minutes, thank you. Moving on nicely, we're on 15322, it's the financial report update. And we are lucky enough to have our finance director back from sick leave.
Thank you very much. I've lost about nine days of processing invoices, so there's the risk that some of the costs aren't there. But deciding to drop in terms of income, our income was slightly down, that's due to share three being vacant. And we've also got an underpayment from RBL which hasn't gone through. In terms of expenditure, the major cost is obviously salaries wages. The under spend reflects the understaffing of establishment, as the amount we're sitting with is 18 staff members, we budgeted 21. In terms of the other expenses, there's not that much of a variation. The only thing I had to qualify is the electricity and water invoices, some of them haven't been processed. And some of them overlap between May and June, and certainly those in June are not there. So there is a risk that some of those costs will not be there. But it's also very early in the year, it's quite difficult to start, you know, setting something up to determine what the number should be.
We're frozen, aren't we?
We are frozen in terms of our tariff.
Yeah, that's okay, yeah.
So hopefully we're not going to.
We're not going to notice at the moment.
But one of the risks that we have is that we're all on estimated readings, and we're trying to get that to actual readings. So otherwise the same as if we have all the senior projects and we won't be able to quantify that. So we are still pursuing that. But otherwise there's not very much, there's the timing differences, insurance, for example, will be paid this month, the month of June. All its fees will be paid earlier because they were much earlier, so that's what paid in May. And we're very much into that in June. But otherwise it's not very much of a variance, it's not very indicative in the first two months because of the early nature of the start of the year. Got some questions by councillor Hollis.
Hi, councillor Hollis. GWS admin charge, have we not made a charge to the trusts or?
We tend to do that at the year end in June.
Okay, and then the property rent received underpaid by RBL. Why is that not all rent paid or?
They pay what they believe that they can afford. So they paid up to date until the 31st of March 2021. And then they've been slightly underpaying, they pay a thousand pounds plus the insurance. And it should be about 2.5.
So this hasn't come before the regional or? Like, okay.
That would go to finance anyway, not personnel.
Can we make a recommendation?
I think it should be.
Is that financial?
The finance, yeah.
Oh, second now.
You can't do that because it's not a gender item, but it will be noted by them.
We're saying that they were underpaying on their rent, and yet we say we've got no bad debts. But that is a bad debt really, isn't it, if they're underpaying?
Well, we haven't raised it.
Right.
So what we're doing is we're raising the invoice for the amount that they're paying, because otherwise it's bad implications. Because we pay them as fast and we have to wait for them to go. Whether there is a bad debt, I'm not sure, we have to have them, they actually owe us another money in addition to this. So there's going to be a series of meetings that we're going to have with them, we're going to stop breaking up the amounts that they actually owe us.
And finance will deal with all that, will they?
Finance will deal with that.
And can they let us know when it?
Sure, it'll reflect in your, it'll reflect in your financial report.
Any more questions on finance then? No, they're letting me off lightly today. So moving on to Members Officer Protocol to carry out review of the policy for recommendation through full council.
So we're just going through, I know you've probably heard on the audit that one of the things was our policies, which need to be, the up to date ones need to be on the website. But also we need to go back through the process, some of them are due to be reviewed. And for us on this committee, Member Officer Protocol and Code of Conduct were first out of the gate. So luckily it's not really something that changes, Member Officer Protocol. This is a model one which is shared by Malkin SLCC across councils, because then we are safer, it's got the correct wording in for any disputes or legalities that may arise out of it. That has all about the ACAS dealings, which is also still up to date. So it's open to any amendment if committee feel that they want to.
Jenny.
I personally reading through it, and I have read through it. I thought it was written well. It's something I looked at and I thought, yeah, that's how it should be, yeah, so I'm quite happy with that.
I must admit, I agree with Jenny, that is very good. I do think that perhaps, as it's basically a new year, that a copy of that should be reviewed again at our council meeting and go to all councillors as an electronic copy. So perhaps some of them might read it and obey it.
Well, we will have to actually recommend it to full council for adoption, and therefore we will include it in the papers.
Absolutely.
And a question. In the expectations, since 4.1, councillors can expect timely response to inquiries and complaints. I've taken three emails in the last three months, but I'm not quite having any reply whatsoever.
To whom? Semitres.
Yeah, officers regarding various issues, I've not had any reply.
All right.
Obviously, the timely response isn't happening. You know, these are questions that residents have asked me and I'll pass forward.
Okay. So have you traced that up with them?
Yes, I have, I'm going to do it again, I've still had no answer, but to chase up email.
All right, so if you want to copy me in on those.
Okay, I'll do that, yeah.
You know, if there ever, if there is an issue like that, the easiest way is to copy me in and then I trot downstairs to them and I go, so, what's happening?
It's a good, the member script is really good in that, have we no other way of being more strict with people who step across the line?
No.
We don't, so they can really do what they like and get away with it.
Yes, are we talking about officers, councillors?
Officers, well, anyone, rip.
Well, obviously for staff, there is more severe outcomes. But I'm afraid that councillors know that's legislated for over and above us, I'm afraid, and yes, it's an issue.
It's an issue, because it's a return of like a self policing disciplinary committee inside.
It's go back to Brickland.
Yeah, all councillor issues have to go to Brickland.
Can we not use our standing orders from, we believe that's incorrect behaviour, and have those councillors removed from the council meeting?
What you have, we recently revised standing orders, actually in April. And we looked at making them more robust about attendance. I bring into mind, I believe it was a matter that they couldn't be a member of the public and a councillor at the same meeting, there had to be one or the other. There is always the option to use standing orders to remove councillors from a meeting. That is already there.
Yeah, now my question is, if they misbehave publicly or anything else, can we have it brought up as a point of order? But we are not accepting that, so therefore we don't want them in the meetings.
But you saw. I think there's always the option to go for a vote of no confidence, but actually there isn't anything that we can do that exempts them from meetings because their residents who have voted to them have the right for representation.
We're just trying to get around to them.
But councillors can show their lack of faith if they require to through a vote of no confidence. And removal from meetings, that is always within your powers.
Well, you can remove them for the meetings, it would be nice if you had an order where you could say you are suspended for two meetings or something.
Yeah, unfortunately that's not.
But we can't, that's a.
We have a lawyer on it and as it.
Oh, I did. You voted him to, yeah.
Yep, always within the councillor's power.
Yeah, you remember that off by heart now.
So apart from the things, I'm sorry, I can't actually make any better. And I will deal with the issues with semitres, we've tracked them afterwards, I can find out what they are and I'll go and ask them to trace that up. Chair, are you happy to?
I am happy, on the back you have a flow chart, which is always handy to keep as well. There's a flow chart.
I don't ask your, if you're content to go to vote then please.
Right, could I have a recommendation?
I would propose a proposal for adoption.
Jenny, second, all in favour?
So just to check the recommendation, is we're recommending to full council, they adopt this document, yeah?
Yeah, Members Officer Protocol. All right, thank you all for that. Moving on to 15522, to consider adopting latest LGA model policy for recommendation to full council.
Obviously, I wouldn't put all of this in, and it is written, well, you can have it written in the context that it is or that we can take the I out. And it's just that this was reviewed over COVID in May 2021, and it's what councils are looking to adopt. I did speak to Brickland, and potentially they're bringing this forward later on this year to adopt their new code of conduct as well, when theirs is due for renewal. It is a bit more. Well, I think it's better since it's been rewritten, because I think it's a bit more concise, which is unbelievable because there's 16 pages of it. But I would say that we would be looking at from definitions on page two to going to page 11, as what would be in our document. Move that across. Pardon, you're saying, sorry. We're looking at in the context of us, because they have put extra stuff in, they've put in best, I mean, if councillors want to adopt best practice for committee and standard public life, I think that's up to council. Because this is basically across all levels of council. So it depends what council would want, you know, I think it. Again, there are still levels of, there is only so much that we are allowed to do as far as enforcement is concerned. But actually, I think it's a fairly clear and comprehensive document.
I would say that we could recommend this to full council to, for them to have their sound yet and hopefully get it passed. How do you feel? Have you seen this, Roy?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, you would have seen it, wouldn't you?
Yeah.
It's the same, how many times do you want me to have seen it? Again, as far as I'm concerned, I agree with the clerk that we should actually recommend from page two to 11. But I do feel that, once that has been done, I would personally like to ask them if they would look at it from all of it. Yes, it's for higher levels of councils than we are, but it's a damn good standard to try and to get to. So that would be the way that I would do it.
Any other questions? Are you all happy to recommend this to full council? Could I have a proposal, please? A second, Susan.
So what I'll do is I'll actually read the document, I'll send it out to yourselves, so you can have a look at it before that goes on to full council.
Jenny and Susan. Darling, in case you forgot. I think we don't want to be the only councillor that don't work to best practice. I hope not anyway. Moving on now to 15622, Committee Officer's Report, to receive updates from the Committee Officer. Decision required, we haven't got no below the line?
No, we haven't got any below.
We haven't got any, okay then.
No, so I don't put it on unless there's actually something to put on there. And potentially we'll have something to go on next month, but I'll get to that later. So just looking at the courses book, there's been no updates from last month on the training. So moving on to recruitment, adverts were out for the administration officer. And I believe by the time I get back to the front of house, two rooms job will be. It's gone out today, has it? I haven't been in, yeah, I haven't been in the office to see it. We're also working, I need to speak to Nick when I can finally be in the same room as him, to put out his missing town team member post, we're going to put that back out again. And obviously we've got a member of staff that's going to be going off on maternity soon. So we are looking at how we, the best way for us to go around getting maternity cover. So that may be via contract or via advert, we're just going to have a look and we need to have a look at that. So that's on recruitment at the moment, that's where we are on that. And the Carnegie Roof Tender closed on Friday, I have five tenders which we will open up at the end of meeting, after the meeting. And these will be scanned and sent to the architect, and the architect will produce a letter of recommendation for the committee and council. And then that will have to go to, I suspect, go to full council because of the cost, I think it will be over the boundary for us to decide. So that will be that, and then hopefully we can move along with that and get that work done fairly quickly.
Dennis, you got a question?
Yeah, well, yeah, my question is, after all that recruitment, does that ring us up to full strength?
No.
No, so we're still not at full strength?
No.
Do we have any idea of when we will be at full strength?
Not currently, things like the countryside officer, we've had three people in that post in three years. So obviously we need to review that because it's not working out the way that we want it to. And therefore we need to have a look at that. And then I think we're still missing another works team person, is that off the top of my head?
Yeah.
I think that's what we're missing.
The countryside officer.
Yeah.
Are we looking to upgrade or downgrade the position? Because I feel the problem with that position is that it's a damn good CV job. If you're doing that for a finger size of Don Common, plus the town, plus a bit of planning and, you know, when you put that on your CV, that's going to look good for anybody going, you know, and everybody that has come in has been still young enough to be ambitious enough to want to go forward. So I know that would it be better to make it into a a more junior position where they were doing the work, part of the works team sort of side of it? And then with the new person that's going to do the paperwork, upgrade them to somebody that is going to do extra planning? I think we've got to look at that as a position because it's.
I'm going to keep holding planning, so that's not an issue.
Right.
I think we really need to look at it because it's, what do we need as a council from it? And actually from that post, what we need is somebody who has the knowledge of like managing grazing, managing a triple SI, managing work. And if you went, and no, and if you went down to a lower grade, you would then have to look at potential consultancy to answer those questions. Because it's a diverse job in that the actual on the ground operational work, you probably could get away with a ranger type job, but then you don't get the consultancy element of them having that knowledge at that level. So I think we just need to look at it properly.
With a ranger type job, could that be a part time position? And could the ranger have the expertise that we actually need?
No.
I only say that because I know the guy who did all of the grazing, all of the triple SI and everything at Red Arches, which who would know is next to Heath, and took that from being a disaster back up to being much like we've done with Don Common, and he did that over about a 10 year period. Then he moved to the big city, and I understand that he's moving back to the countryside, but he's not looking for major employment.
I would say no, because we still have the other sites that we have to look at as well. And things like tree surveys and running the volunteer group and all of that as well. So, I mean, we need to have a look at the job, so there's no hard and fast to that. But actually looking at the level of work that's going through that post at the moment, I would say that that isn't a part time job.
I think it's the expertise. I know we went to where Chris Harvey's Sun Lipswee was up there, and it's a big park area. And I think that orchid's come back up again, but it's one that you're not allowed to cut down, that somebody said, oh, I was going to pick it. Do you remember that orchid? And he had to square it off because, and normally a normal day, they wouldn't think of that, and it is now, and it's like the other one.
The colour I was talking about actually discovered about five of those different places.
Yeah.
That's what he used, like I said.
But he's not.
I spoke to him about applying for this, because I thought he would be absolutely brilliant for what we want, because, you know, he'd been doing it all his life. And he just said, I'm not really interested in that amount of work.
That's about the thing is to say there is, you know, quite a lot particularly running the, I don't think.
Dennis.
Yes, okay, now, I think what Roy, I don't know, I think he's trying to get the same thing I'm going to say. Because we seem to have a good position that people pick up and take, and they use it, and then they use it as a stepping stone to go forward to bigger, higher things, because most of the people we've lost, we've lost to them getting higher jobs and everything. So we have a problem there. How we're going to solve it is probably down to you, but.
Well, that needs to be the review, and in fairness, I need to speak to the Chair of Immunities about what his feelings are on it as well. You know, we've developed several contacts within the environment world now. So maybe a chat to them about how other councils are managing theirs. I just think we need to look at it and see where we go from. I don't have a definitive answer to that. And I suspect also that we're going to be expected to be much more looking at our carbon footprint and things like that in the future. So therefore it's kind of like, where are we going with that? Yeah, I just think we need to have a review of it. I don't think it's a bad thing that we're known as a good place to fill your CV, because it means that we're doing good work. And that people look at Setford and see that Setford's doing good work, that can only be a good thing. So it's a bit of a backhanded compliment really. But yeah, I just think we need to look at it and actually review, because we're probably in a very different position to where we were originally, because we've come forward quite a long way. I think we just need to review what we need and have a look at it from there. But our countryside officer hasn't actually left yet, so, you know, you know. Yes, so we'll discuss that after their departure.
Susan.
Yes, I just wondered if perhaps we're looking at it the wrong way slightly, because it obviously is a responsible position. And we want someone with all these environmental skills and proper to be a good degree and so on. And it doesn't seem a lot of money to someone of that position, is that a reason? People are going on to other things, you know, if you're married with children, you probably want to be earning a bit more.
Definitely, but I guess it's about levels. I look at the county councils and the people that they're employing, what the levels are. And we're there and thereabouts with it. So I don't think conservation and that pays.
Sometimes we're not sort of underpaying. You know, I just think if you want people with more and more qualifications.
Because we didn't used to have a countryside officer, it was literally a member of the town team, and we had a consultant that did all that, that element of the work for us. So we only paid them for what the consultancy work that they did, but we had an extra member of the team.
So that was used for anything in between.
So like I say, I just think we just need to go and have a look back and see what we need on that one.
A good review.
Yeah, and always after somebody leaves, it's a good time to review the situation anyway. So, I mean, the last one left in COVID, so kind of like, you know. Yeah. So that's where we're going with that. And then I think I'd have to actually have a look, I think we're just down, as in some members of our staff are part time as opposed to full time. So I'll have to have a look, I, you know.
And we'll see what we get from these rounds as well.
Yeah. So are you happy with that?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, so the next thing is the decisions workflow system. So this is something we agreed last year, it was last year, yes. It's part of our objectives as a committee this year. And what we're going to do is we're going to roll out the first workflow meeting to personnel next month. So you're my guinea pigs. So what I'd like you to do, please, is either bring your devices to the meeting early, so we can put the app on your devices that you're going to be using, or come into the office and we'll load them onto your device prior to the meeting. So and then what we'll do from September onwards, we will roll out the thing meeting by meeting. But of course, a lot of you are on a lot of committees, so you'll be my knowledgeable people going into these other meetings. There will be councillor training that everybody will be invited to, and there is a video that I'll be able to share with councillors that you can just keep going back to for training. So the, what it is, is it's all part of our internal system, so it's a secure system, much like mod gov that's breaking juice, so they have an internal system with a workflow in it. So your username is basically your Setford Town Council email address. And what will happen is you get loaded onto your committees. And then when you open up the app, all the committees you are on, the little tabs will appear. You click on the tab and then all the paperwork for that committee is in there. So I'll have all the meeting dates and all the paperwork against all the meeting dates. So literally, instead of getting emails and having to. So literally, instead of getting emails and having to open it, you press the tab and it opens up all the documents. Now also within each account, you have the ability to take notes, write notes or type notes against that meeting and that's completely private, nobody else can ever get into there. So you can actually take notes as you go along on your, so, and it's against it. Now for us, it's great because then we can convert those, that into minutes. So all the notes we're taking, it will then convert into the minutes for us, which is, well, I mean, obviously we'll still have to go in particularly as it's a bit like that comedy sketch, isn't it, in the lift? When it, it doesn't necessarily, and we found out, didn't we, with our meetings when they were live? There were actually says in the transcript isn't what you said and some of it's quite funny. But obviously Karen will still have to go through, but there is, you know, that the fact that that can be used to take it across. So.
Type notes or can you actually write on the screen?
You can run the screen as well, I believe, because I know where you're coming with this. I know where you're going, all right? So all the devices that we have are three years old. And obviously we're coming into a brave new world in that. And so it's time to replace all the councillors' devices, yes? So obviously I'm willing to go and quote on what devices councillors think we should be using. And if I can have your opinions on that, I will get those quotes in time for the budget setting meetings. So that it can be put in, to keep the finance officer happy, it can be put into the budget for. I mean, it may well be that we have in the equipment reserve enough anyway, but I wouldn't want to second guess that. And then we can put that into that. So, but what will happen then is also what was in our priorities was apps. And what we'll do is obviously the councillors will bring their old device back in and we'll swap it for the new one. Now, the old devices, people like the allotments, the town team, they can have the apps on our bigger devices, so it's easier for them to do play park inspections and things like that. The other thing is when I get these apps, I will be able to download them on councillors' tablets as well. If, oh, well, onto the town council ones, if they want to also use that reporting system. So like if you're walking around the allotment, the app will have every single allotment on it. And you will be able to type or write something on it and send it in and that will come to our central reporting on it. So all goes into the workflow system.
And you send an email, basically.
Yeah, so literally you can do it on the spot and, and the actual one for open spaces is GPS. So when you put it in, if you're stood there, you take a photograph, it will give us the GPS location of where the issue is. Dennis.
Thank you. So when does this, when is, when is the likelihood of us starting this?
Well, we're starting it next month.
Exactly, so it's beyond these things?
For the moment, yeah, because, yeah.
For once, I'm excited about electrical devices, not really in the phone age. So I'd be very happy to bring my device in as soon as I can.
Yeah, no problems. So we'll get that looked at and then, but we will, like I say, we will have a councillor training session and there will be a video link that you can just keep going back and watching the training video. But yeah, we're going to try it for hours and then we can sort out all the teething problems, we can do some more training over August. Obviously there's virtually, there's only planning, I think, in August. So therefore we've got time to do training with people. You can either come in or, you know. And then we can be much more in a better place by September to, to get going. Chris?
I, I have my own personal iPad that I use for town council.
Yes.
And we'll still be able to use that instead of having three iPads.
Yes, because it's linked to your Setford Town Council email address.
Now, after that, what about backup for IT? I'm having major issues with Breton's IT at the minute, that's a fact. The members dot com thing we try and go on, it's not working properly. I've been in totally IT department here with three times and we still can't fix it. Are we going to have a bigger IT support team then? Because obviously we're getting more and more technical.
We don't have an IT support team. It, it, it goes, it goes through, it goes through the contract. So this, this is being delivered by clouding. So they would be able to troubleshoot actual software issues. But the actual technical side of it is, the hardware side is psychosis. But we don't have an IT support person.
Are we looking to talk to Breton? Looking at costs for this council? There will be always a number of district councillors that sit on this council. Do we need to buy 18 of the damn things when at this moment, seven of us have already got them? And we talked to Haven, because I know I tried.
Yeah. Conversation with them.
And, and, and they didn't want email addresses. But now we've gone down this road of having the, the proper Setford Town Council. I wonder whether they would re-look at it. I mean, you could say this, that would cost a lot of money.
Well, we did, we did ask them when we actually went and like you said, they weren't interested at that time because it's security. It's all about being able to keep your system secure. And it's about whether we would be able to compartmentalise your tablet so that, and this is way beyond me, so that our, so that our system is still separate. I don't know how it works, I'm not the person to speak to. But we're open to have that discussion again with Norfolk as well because we have two councillors who probably use their Norfolk iPads. I don't know. None of them are.
Well, Breton uses an iPad, Norfolk is something different to that.
An iPad is where you can keep it separate. I was given an iPad with flagship and that was separate. They said you can open up another account. Right, which I did do, so that was my personal account. But every time I wanted something from flagship, it's going through, you know, loads of passwords, it's written wrong. But that was completely separate. So you can do it with iPad. I'm not sure when you can do it on ordinary tablets. That's why I've never put anything else on the town council tablet.
But these are things that we can look into because I think last time everybody went for an Android because, and obviously there is other tablets available, not just iPads. If any of the marketing people are listening. So I think because it was new and there wasn't a desire to spend the additional money that it would cost to get those products. Councillor didn't go for that, but it may well be now that now we're embedded into using our technology more, that we feel that that's something we're prepared to do. So, yeah, you know, but that's something for committee to feel and, and, and have a look at when we, we put that forward. The other thing that we need is we need all the other things back, we need all the other things back in. Because anything that we're not going to use needs to be cleared down and everything so that we meet our security things. So the easiest way to do that is a, you know, one in, one out. We have councillors who have never taken a tablet off us because they use their own ones. So, yeah, so that's fine, but we do need the ones that we had out back because they have to be all cleared down and our IT people have to look at them.
And that's one more, please.
Yeah.
Regardless of the, as we get the new system, we aren't going to go down the road where we vote for the iPads, are we?
Where we?
Where we vote using your tablet. We're still going to stick to hands up, etcetera, etcetera. Norfolk County Council now does a system where we vote for the iPads.
All right.
So, you know, we can sit here and no one is watching the town poll and we'll not have anyone's voting if you're just using your iPad.
Well, our standing order says it has to be a show of hands and unless that changes, it has to be a show of hands.
I just heard somewhere that someone was thinking of making us vote for electronics.
Go that way, but without change.
The thing is, is it, I, I think it's one of the, I think, I think it's one of the things that is available and we used it in lockdown simply because of the difficulty of seeing and wanting to put their hands up. But our standing orders, as it's reverted back to the original standing orders, is show of hands. Unless councillors want to change it. I mean, but when you're in other meetings and things like that, because remember, it may be a facility we have on it because we're not necessarily always in council meetings. Sometimes we go into, we sit on other boards and everything as well and it may well be something that we use within that. But yeah, now as far as I'm aware, unless you as a council choose to change standing orders, it will remain the same.
It's quite a good transparency thing as far as the officers and things are concerned. If we have a meeting like this, yes, we do, as we've always done, put your hand up. But if you've got a facility that you put on there, then puts it into the paperwork for everything.
I can see it, play it down forward, you can see that.
But not, not as a, as a.
If I put my hand up for one thing and put the total different on the other, then that would be problematic, wouldn't it?
No, you, you, what, what they're trying to explain is when you push the faucet, she gets the total.
She gets the total.
Without having to count.
Yeah.
Right, but to the public's point.
Hand up and then say no.
No, yeah.
So I think we can safely say we're sticking to a show of hands.
Yeah, yeah. Well, if we're going to have silly, silly people in the room.
Well, no, we're going to do it. Right, I won't, obviously.
So that's kind of it, it for me really. And like I say, we're just kind of getting back into the groove. We have been missing a few people recently for being unwell. And, and we still have somebody off, but we're getting back to full strength. I mean, it's summer as well, so it gives a chance to catch up on things. So hopefully I'm looking at having the play parks out first, then the allotments out and then the open spaces out, rolled out.
I, I must say that I can't remember when our officers are then up to full campus. I'm just making a point like that.
What can you do about it, Dennis? You've gone for, you've just gone through a major pandemic and it's still gear.
Sure, we are making progress into that direction.
Yes, yes.
And I, I'm happy to say we are.
But even, but even if we have a full complement, I can't guarantee that I can keep them 100% healthy all the time or not get them promoted.
The, the main thing to remember is we are councillors, we don't run the council staff, that is Tina's job. So if you can all be aware of that and not go up to officers and say, you haven't done this, that and the other. Got something to report, report to Tina. A bit like your thing, Tina, you, you, you've wrote in, you've done the right thing, you've emailed in, you haven't got an answer. Go to Tina, let her deal with it. That is the best way to, and, and you won't get done as a bully or anything else. Because, you know, people are getting hot and bothered and, and it's we all, we all sort of can fly off the handle pretty quickly in this weather. So if you can all be aware of that, thank you very much.
Just say something, please. I phoned Town Clerk yesterday about graffiti up at Castle Park. Sadly, one of the, they decided to graffiti John's bench. And I've had a message through from John's daughter. And she'd like to convey her thanks to the works team that went straight up and they've done a brilliant job of cleaning off. And I said I would do that today. So it's recorded her thanks, the family's thanks and also mine as well because it was done, it was absolutely amazing. As I'm opening up the app.
Yeah, so.
I appreciate it may, it may sound like an odd way to do it, but because we're managing lots of different projects at the moment, if it comes into me, I can I can see what else people are being used for and I can actually go and speak to them and say, look, you know, this has come up, can we do this? And then if we need to rearrange anything else in order to do that, we do it there and then so that everybody knows what's, what's going on in the team.
I know she, and I know Anisa phoned up and spoke to Hazel and she's conveyed her thanks through Hazel as well, but she did, yeah.
Thanks.
So, no, that's brilliant.
Thank you. So thank you all for coming on this hot day. We are lucky that it's a little bit cold, aren't we?
Yeah, I shall just wait a minute.